Since we're going wide.
Yay, there we are, we're ready to go.
All right. Hopefully I don't get feedback. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is a special session of the mayor and council of the city of Bisbee, county of Cochise, state of Arizona. It's being held on Tuesday, January 11th, 2021 at 6:00 PM by Zoom. A roll call, please.
I'm some member Louis Pollack is has resigned. He's not here. Councilmember Johnny Giacchino.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Davis.
Here.
Mayor Ken Budge.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Mel Sweet.
Here.
Mayor Proton Anna Clank.
Here.
City staff Stephen Hawken, city manager Ashley Coronado, city clerk Joel Anders, personnel director Matt Gurney, public works director Logan Dodd, operations manager Doug Taylor, city planner and Joe Estes, city attorney.
Well, thank you, everybody. We have returned back to Zoom, maybe just hopefully for a small amount of time. But just to remind you, I'm working off the two screens here and and I'll try to see your hand raised, but feel free to interrupt if you would. If you would like me to recognize you, I don't always see everybody and but I will try to listen to whatever happens. So we'll, we'll get back into the groove of this, but hopefully not for first for too long. So tonight we have one item. I asked this to be a special session mainly because I didn't want to bring it into to the, to the regular session next week. It's going to be a very busy one. I wanted to make sure we had time and, and we weren't tired. And hopefully we can get through this in a, in a timely matter and, and everybody have have a good feeling about where we're moving on this. So the first item to be considered is discussion of possible selection of an architect to provide architectural services and construction supervision for the city hall building. I'm going to turn it over to, to city manager Park and the, just to give you a little background where, you know, evaluating or listening to what the evaluators said and the numbers that they're giving us, we've seen those. There is a small correction in those because of a, a technical error. And I, before I turn it over, I actually remember now we received two letters that came in to speak to this. Nobody else has signed up to, to sign in. So those two letters have been emailed to you. If you guys would like them read, please. Anybody would like them read, please let me know right now. We can read them publicly. If not, you've seen them in your email, hopefully. Does anybody want to hear those letters? Okay, Anna, so why don't we go ahead and read? Can you go ahead and read those two letters for us, Ashley? Then we'll move forward on to the actual presentation. Sorry for backtracking for a minute. I'm getting into the Zoom thing again.
Yes, we all have to get used to it again. Okay, the first one is from Eric Steiner from Last Architects. It says, please accept both the attached markup as well as the below statement for submission for comment to be read at tonight's meeting. After review of amended agenda posted to the city of Bisbee website on January 6th, 2022, the total point values per committee member two and three do not equate to the individual section scores. Committee member two states a total score of 96 for Albert and Hopper, while each section only equates to a total of 94. Both Last and Albert Hopper have tied with this total fix. Committee member three states a total of 85 points for Last Architect, while each section equates to a score of 90, creating another tie between Albert Hopper and Last Architects. What is the last score of Last Architects per committee one as a score of 85 would tie both Albert Hopper and Last Architects? We await and respect your comments and response at the special session of mayor council on Tuesday, Eric Steiner. And the second one is from Al Anderson. And he states, my wife and I agree with the review team's decision to recommend Albert Hopper to the design of new city hall. Mr. Hopper is without question the best choice, not only because he offers a service to this particular project. One, he has already personally and professionally invested himself in way below normal costs, but also because of his relentless, relentless attention to detail and customer satisfaction. Over the course of three decades, the general contracting companies that I have personally managed have used many Arizona architects to construct dozens of high-end offices, including many of the same magnitude as our city hall or larger. The largest engineering architect firm we used was Stan Tech Engineering, which has 22,000 employees and 350 international offices. Yet none of these companies, including Stan Tech, could compare to Mr. Hopper's dedication and devotion to the extensive amount of work that he provided to us and our customers. He does not disappoint. Thank you for your consideration and service to the community. Al Anderson, Bisbee resident.
All right, thank you, Ashley. So I'm going to turn it over now to city manager Park. And we have their review, review team recommendations and he could answer the question to the number one, to the first letter that was read if needed. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to give a little bit of a summary here and then I'm going to actually have our city planner Doug Taylor do the actual staff report, which you received as part of your packet. Sometime late this fall, I don't remember the exact date. Council authorized staff to commence with getting, getting proposals from local architects for the purpose of designing the city hall building at the location at 118 Arizona Street and, and also subsequent construction management. This contract is only for the purpose of designing a building and then later on doing the construction management. This in no way, shape or form commits us to build a building at any given point in time. And I know we've had some conversation lately with construction prices that it may not be optimal to do so in the near future. But the design is good forever. So what we would like to do is we would like to move forward with, with designing the building. That way we've got it ready to go so that we can seek bids for building construction at whatever the appropriate time may be. And of course, that's all under the control of the mayor and council. So we received six proposals from architects, mostly in the Tucson area, somewhere around the second day of December. And then we commenced with the evaluation process. The evaluation process was a part of the request for proposals. So everybody knows what we were going to evaluate the architects on. That includes numerous factors, which you saw in the RFP. What it does not include is a cost. Okay, so the raw scores that are based on the RFP do not include the submission of, of fees from the architects themselves. So now in Doug's staff report, you will notice that it identifies the review team as numbers one, two, and three. While I'm not going to identify which is which, the review team consists of me, consists of Doug Taylor, who is our city planner and an architect. And the third member of the review team is Logan Dodd, who is our operations manager. So you've got one person who's very familiar with the city, very familiar with the project and somewhat familiar with the architects, depending on who they are. One person who's been with us for about six months now has architectural background and has met everyone who sent us proposal only once. And the third member of the team who hasn't met anybody. So, so we've got from very familiar to not familiar at all in, in the team of evaluators who came up with the rankings that you have before you this evening. Now, just to respond for a moment to the one letter that was sent in tonight from the one architectural firm. The, there's, there's a couple of different ways you can look at the numbers. We have the raw scores. I happen to have them sitting right here if anybody wants to talk about them. And there, the, the staff report indicates that all three evaluators picked the same, same proposal as the best. Okay. And if you base it, you know, on, on the same criteria that was used in that letter tonight by adding up the raw scores of the three architects that came out on top. The Hopper proposal still comes out on top. The PMM proposal comes in second and the last proposal comes in third. So no matter how you evaluate the scores from the evaluators, you, you end up with the same firm on top. So that's where we are, just what my anticipation is at this point. We would highly recommend that you identify an architect tonight so that we can commence with. We still would have to bring an agreement to you for your approval. Hopefully we can get that done in relatively short order. And then right after that, we can start working with the architect. Based on the proposals, the architects had various and sundry different timelines that they could meet. We asked them for 90 days. Nobody met 90 days, but one architect met pretty close to the 90-day period. And then once we have a design, that design comes back to you for approval. And then once we have an approved design, then at the appropriate time, whatever that may be, then we will go, go ahead and seek bids for construction. So that's, the timeline is, we're probably out to late spring, early summer on design. And we're probably in summertime for, for the bidding process. If, if, if it's appropriate to do so at that time. And so that means at the very earliest, we can have a completed building, probably sometime in late spring, early summer of 2023. And the sooner we get it done, the sooner I can retire again. So anyway, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Doug to do the staff report. And then after that, we'll certainly engage in any conversation you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Parkin, for, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. For the record, the six firms were EMC Two Group Architects Planners PC from Mesa, Arizona, Trevor Pan Architects, PLL C Scottsdale, Arizona, Albert N. Hopper Jr. Architect Tucson, Arizona, PMM Architecture Planning and Preservation Tucson, Arizona, Last Architects Tucson, Phoenix, Arizona, and Vint and Associates Architects Tucson, Arizona. The rating criteria for the record was qualifications of the individual or firm were a possible 60 points. We had various questions within that, which can be provided if need be. Number two was the federally funded project experience that gave them a possible 10, 10 points. Contract and construction management experience gave them another possible 10. And timeframe for completing the project gave them a possible 20 points. That gave them the possibility of 100 points. None of the, the firms got a rating of 100 points, but go over the final scores. I know you have these. You know what? We can hold that. And if you want it, I can go over it. But if you have questions, please let me know.
All right, thank you, Doug. What I'm going to do is open it up for discussion among council and let me hear what, what people think and what, where we might go. Before I do, I'm just going to chime in a little bit. Then of course I'll, I'll, I'll probably have a longer dissertation, but, but I know there's a concern about what's this going to cost us? And, and yes, we have $2 million in the bank, but you know, like, like city manager Park and said, we're not, this is not necessarily, we're going to a build. What we're doing is trying to make the plan and see if it's going to work. And if the budget team, budget system works out, which is we, we are able to sell the Hillcrest apart, buildings and also some other situations that are coming up. We might be able to meet the, what we think this may cost. But, but until we have a design and, 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 and get some ballpark figures, we won't know that. So this is the first step and probably a very long process. We'll be coming back and revisiting many times, but, but if we just put it on hold again, we're just going to be there twiddling our thumbs. And we've already been, this council's been there for four years. And I think it's time to, to, to see if we can't come to a more consensus. So that's my little chirp into it. And anybody want to start off with, with any comments from council? Please raise your hand and let me know. Mel, you gotta have.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I have, I have just a couple of questions. Steve had said, well, we don't have to worry about the building yet. I understand that we need to make the plans. But I believe we should have at least an idea if we can afford to do this and where the resources will come from. Where, you know, we can just, I know, first of all, you know, the first question, how much this plan will cost us? Hopper, I think it says for the design $65,500. Is this correct, Doug? 65,500?
Yeah, I, I hate to say it, I don't remember.
Okay, I have it, I have it here in front of me. But my concern is, you know, we, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do this outlay. But I believe the management of the city, the manager and the staff, the planner, they can come up with some ballpark idea and we should have work on a plan. When do we think we can do this? I don't want to just throw some money out and said, well, we can do it in two and three years. Things change in two and three years. So I think we should build a definite timeframe. Some work maybe need to be done. Maybe, maybe, maybe we need to sit down and maybe work on this before we decide to throw some money and then shelf this for another two or three years. Right now we can just say, well, we'll do it and then kick the can down the road and see what happens. This is just some of the ideas I have on this. Like I said, I'm in support of doing this, but we have to be, we have to plan this. We have to have a definite timeframe or at least an, an area. Thinking that prices will go down. I've been in business all for a long time in my life. Prices do not retract as much. They may go down fairly little, but they will not. So right now what we have is we have to work on what the numbers and can we do it? And then maybe look at the design. Is it doable with the money we have rather than let's say, we'll see what will happen in the next two or three years. We can get some money from here and some, I just might, the way I work, the way I operate, the way I do budget is I will have, I will have trouble with this. And maybe the staff, the city and can come up with some, you may, you may, you may need to sit down and work hard on, and come up with something.
Mayor. But yeah, let me first, before I turn to Steve, let me answer a couple of things. Mel, in my opinion is, is, I understand where you're coming from. And, and yes, one, any charges that, that have been proposed, remember for the whole project, not just the design phase. So it's very hard to go out and say, well, what is this going to cost us until we actually have that design? Now, we could throw something together, but it may not be, that's why you use an expert. That's why I'm, I'm in favor of this is to, to get an architect to actually lay out a floor plan and what it is. Then we have a plan that we can then, before we bring it back, get a good, you know, cost estimate, look at our, our, our financial situation at that point. And that's my idea, but I'm going to turn it over to city manager Park and to answer anything that, that.
Okay, here's the plan. Okay. And I'm going to start out talking about the plan with a question. And the question is, how much less money would we have spent if we'd have done this three years ago? Right after the building burned down? Okay, so that's just, there's no answer required here. That's just food for thought. Okay, so the building sat there for four years in its burned out state. And then we started working on it this summer, getting the rubble cleared out and getting the bad parts taken down. And, and of course, as, as you were, Mel, not you particularly, Mel, but as other council members will recall, this was a point of discussion the day before I came back to work. We had a Zoom meeting on that subject, among others. So we talked about the necessity to do it then because we had already taken way too much time to get it done. So the background on a cost is in 2019, a similar proposal to the ones that you have before you tonight was, was requested by council and submitted. And at that time, the entire cost of the project was proposed to be $2.8 million. Now, that $2.8 million includes some things that we probably won't do ultimately, and it also includes some things that we've already done. For instance, demolition work. So adjusted for what we've already accomplished in this process, that $2.8 million project is probably more like 2.4 to 2.5. So then, right before we requested permission from council to ask for proposals, I went back and had the estimate of cost based on what you had two years ago refigured to factor in for inflation. The cost of that building, and I'm going to say three to four months ago, was in, in, in its basic form, building a building similar to what we had, had gone up to something about $2.8 million. So that's 300,000 to 400,000 more than the, than, than what we had. And so now today, what I'm being told is that we're probably in excess of $3 million. So there we, there we are, today's costs. Okay, so now I would have never come this far with you without having some idea where the money was going to come from. Okay, so here's where I believe the money is going to come from. We have $2 million sitting in the back plus the 0.06% interest that it's been drawing for the last four years, which is probably, I don't know, $52.60. So let's just call it 2 million. In, in a move that we made about 14 years ago, that has turned out to be a very smart move at this point. We created, when we started selling surplus city property, we sold the property with the provision that all sales of city-owned property were to be placed in the capital improvements fund. The purpose of that, of course, was so that it didn't get dumped in the general fund and then lost for the ages. So, so we now have something in the neighborhood of $700,000. We've actually accumulated over that 13 or 14 years. We've accumulated over $1 million in it from the sales of city-owned property. But we spent something in the neighborhood of $500,000 to $600,000 of that money on the rebuild of Arizona Street back in 2011. So the balance on that account and, and, and I'm pretty sure it's, it's not quite 700,000, but it's very close. So now you're at 2,700,000, okay? You have in your possession and currently for sale, the Hillcrest apartment building, which is, well, you know where it is in your neighborhood.
Yes.
And that, that building is currently for sale and we are accepting bids until February 2nd. We know of at least two people who are very interested in submitting a bid for that building by February 2nd. And so, you know, of course that, that won't do the deal. Once we get the, once we get a bid that we find acceptable, and that's going to be your call as council, then we have to, you know, negotiate the fine points and actually sell the property. If we get a good looking bid on that building on February 2nd, it should be sold before summertime and the proceeds for that will be in the bank well before we have to start spending money on construction. The appraised value of the Hillcrest building is $600,000 and that is also the minimum bid. So assuming that we have a successful sale of the Hillcrest building anytime in the next year and a half. That 600,000 added to the 2,700,000 that you already have, puts you out at the, in the neighborhood of 3.2, 3.3 million dollars in your home. So, so yes, we do have a plan. We have thought this through. I did not want to wait for the Hillcrest building to sell since the sale is hopefully imminent to determine whether or not we were going to go, go ahead with the design work. The design work, as, as I mentioned before, we are going to have to do it at some point. And I don't believe that we will have to wait, not for the funds to be available. We just want to be sure that we do it timed appropriately so that we get the most bang for our buck. So, so that's the financial plan.
Okay, can I?
Go ahead, Mel. Yep.
Thanks, Steve. Good explanation. My, my, if, my question was about the funding. And you're right, it's not going to be, it's going to be based on what I see. And it's going to probably be around the 3 million cost because of the cost associated with materials and labor. And you have to, you have to also plan for furnishing. I mean, I don't know if you have done the budget. It's not just building a building. When you're building, building of that size, you have to think about what's it going to cost to equip it inside. So that's going to be some, some money for this. My, my only question was just, we need to make sure that we do have the funding and we don't have surprises. That's the only thing, like I said, this is my only, my concern is that down the road, well, we have to furnish the city, we have to do the interior of this building of this size. You're looking at at least, you know, half a million dollar, if, if maybe less, maybe more. I'm not too familiar with, with the prices, but I can assure you, you're going to have some more expenditure that has to be allocated for. My concern is that if, you know, the funding, that we have the funding, that we don't surprise ourselves and surprise the citizen of the town. That will be the only issue I have.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, um, okay, Mel, I, I do believe that my previous explanation answered your question. Do we have the funding? But further to, you know, furnishings and equipment for the building, we have already spent, we, actually the proceeds from the insurance company for all the damages due to the fire was $2.7 million. Okay, we have already spent several hundred thousand dollars on replacement equipment and putting fence around the building, which you, which you see, which will come out when we're done. And so most, if not all of the equipment that we replaced, because remember, we lost everything in the fire.
Yeah.
Everything had to be replaced. We were lucky to come out with the servers and a couple of other things that were grabbed on the way out the door by the firefighters. So, so we've, we've already really taken care of replacing the furnishings that were burned in the fire. Those are being used right now over at the temporary facility on Erie Street. And we have every intention of moving all of that stuff with us into the new building. Now, that doesn't mean we're gonna have every single thing, but that means that we're going to be 95 to 99% already there. So I'm not worried about too many surprises with regard to that.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Welcome.
All right, I'm going to toss it out. Who's going to be next? Somebody's got to give me your, Leslie. Okay, Frank, thank you.
Yes, I, I share Mel's concerns, of course, about the cost. And, you know, I've had conversations about that. I appreciate Steve's explanation. I think that is timely to go ahead and so. I think that it's timely to go ahead and select an architect so we can get this cost pinned down. We've waited. Uh, you know, it's too long, really. And we can see what the cost of that has been. Um, I'm familiar with, uh, Mr. Harper. I've worked, uh, KWR Construction. When he had projects going on there as well. He's competent architect. He's, he's, he's local. And has great, uh, feelings and concerns for city of Bisbee's. So I, I feel confident he would. He would be a correct choice for us.
Thanks, Frank. Um. Uh, Leslie, thank you. Go ahead. What, what's your feelings?
Okay, it took me a second to get unmuted. Sorry. Um. I think I agree with Frank. Um, I've, and, and with Mel. Thank you, Steve, for that explanation of where all the money is gonna come from. And as far as the selecting of the architect goes, I have no problem with what the committee decided on. Um, I think that, that you guys looked at good, you used a good sort of, um. What's the word I'm looking for here? Criteria, I guess. And it was all relevant to the project and I think Al is a good choice. And that's about it.
Thank you, uh, Leslie. Anna, your turn. Thank you.
I'm just really glad that we're moving, finally moving forward with this. And I have, um, every confidence in, in Steve that he looked at the numbers. Um, to make sure that we had what we, what we need, basically what we needed to, to get this project going. Um, I have concerns with, uh, Mr. Hopper and the fact that he, uh. Underbid so low compared to everybody else, which leads me to believe that we may have change order, after change order. Um, we've had stuff like that before. And so that really concerns me. Um. I, I like the, uh, last, I, I like their drawings or, you know, their, their examples of, of what they could do. Um, Mr. Hoppers were okay too. I just, I didn't like the way, um. Some of the offices were set and I know that can be, can be rearranged, but, um, I think. My choice would be for, um, for last.
All right, um, thank you for that. Uh, Joni, I haven't heard from you.
Um, I agree with Anna. I have a, a concern about, you know, change of orders also. Um. That, you know, if we get change of order after change of order, that's gonna end up jacking the price higher. And is it really gonna be that, that much of a savings? I, I also have a concern that, you know, when we went around this the first time. Um, a few years back, um, you know, Mr. Hopper bailed. And, you know, I, I find it interesting that now he's back in the fray wanting to, um, do this again. Why didn't he wanna do it then? I mean, that's, just leaves me a little bit confused. Um, I do also like, uh, the last proposal. Um, I've, I'm curious to why there's not a mayor's office in Hopper's proposal. And I know that sounds a little petty, but, um, you know, the mayor is a part of our, our staff and such. Um, I personally also support the last architect. Um, I, I know it is more expensive. But, um, I do like their design and their ideas.
So part of the overall consideration is, is that. This is ranked not based anywhere on the actual charges. Those, those are actually by state law to be set aside during the evaluation. So that's one, one consideration. I mean, I'm not a construction guy. I was in it. As my part-time job for the twenty-eight years I was fighting fire and, and before I became a firefighter, but. Change orders happen not because the architect, and correct me, Doug, you, you guys are more expertise than I am. They don't create the change orders. The change orders comes from the contractor that says, well, this wasn't designed correctly. So. I, I'm not sure a little bit necessarily means there's gonna be more change orders or whatever. Um, go ahead, Doug. Correct me if I'm.
I'd like to address two things. When the change orders, uh, the, uh, revisions, uh, if you had more changes once. You know, you'll, you'll sit and talk with the architect and they will work up a program and they will come up with a schematic plan. They sort of have already done that to show us they know what they're doing. So that, and I mean all of the architects. So that is something to go by, but that is by no means the way that it will be in the final project. Everybody has input in that. If you decide something and then you change your mind, you're going to pay a revision cost. And that is where the money rises with an architect. Change orders, on the other hand. And architects, I'm sorry, architects have errors and omissions insurance. So if they leave something out. That they're covered on that. But the change orders, the, the issue I think that you're addressing comes with construction. And that is if the, uh, either the client or the. In possibly if the architect has left something out or the client says, I really want a hallway here or a bathroom here. That's a change order that'll cost you in the construction budget. But those are not usually anything. Revision costs are the issue with architects. But the change orders are for construction and what you looked at in the plan is merely someone throwing together. A concept and it's by no means what the final product will look like.
Right. So we're, when we pick an architect, we're gonna get, to me, we're gonna give them a ballpark budget. Say, design us something that's gonna fit in this, 'cause you can't design us a five million dollar building and. And, you know, I don't want a metal building that's, that's one point seven, you know? So hopefully that's what will occur. I mean. I dug up an old picture of the, of the old city hall behind me just to throw it up there's. 'Cause I like to remember that and of course my head fits on the part we saved, but, but anyway, um. You know, that's kind of where we are and I'll answer a lot more questions and I, I'll let Steve, uh. Chime in here a little bit on, on some of, uh, what's been said. Go ahead.
Okay, um, and there's one little detail that I forgot to mention, uh, in, in our original presentation. Um, we, uh, as a, as a part of the process, um, we had what I considered a mandatory meeting. For the, uh, uh, architects to attend prior to, uh, submitting a proposal. Uh, five out of six of the firms that made some metals did attend that meeting. Um, part of the conversation during that meeting was, how much do you have to spend? And, uh, and, and, and that's probably an oversimplified way of saying, uh, what's your budget? Okay? And, uh, the response that we gave them was that we were looking, uh, at. At three million dollars. So, so they knew before they submitted the proposals to us. Uh, how much we were willing to, uh, spend on building a new city hall. So that criteria was known in advance. Just so you know.
Okay. Thanks on that. Um, I'll give you my scenario. Um. I know fairly well two of these con- um, architects. Um, I know Al, I'll be honest, uh. I also know the Vint group. Um, I've worked with both of them. Um, I'm trying to be totally open and look at, at, at these. Um, I also did my research and looked at each one of the architects and, and. Tried to see what, uh, they've done before, um, what their staff is, where, where, what their, their, you know, um. History is, what they've supported and what they've done, uh, been able to do, um, leaving the costs out of the factor and, uh. And I, it, it's, to me, it's, it is a toss-up between a couple, but, but. I mean, I, one thing I know about Al is, is, is he'll try as hard as for us, 'cause I believe he still has his heart at Bisbee. Uh, um, I'm not saying the others wouldn't. Uh, I know some of the other ones also do, do work down here. Um, I. I personally will support the, the, uh. The selection committee's, um, determination. Um, I don't see any reason not to. Um. And remember, we're just, we're gonna negotiate. Once this is done, they'll go out and, and, and negotiate something. And then I'm gonna be coming back to you many, many times about, well, does the mayor get an office or not? Or does, do we go two-story, one-story? Do we do whatever we do? And so. It, there's, there's a lot of water yet to go under the bridge here, but we've gotta get started. And the first step is picking somebody that we can work with. That, that will work with us and, and what our budget and what we as a, as a, as a, as a group was. Six now, but hopefully seven soon, um, um, can support. So, um, that's. You know, where I'm at is, is, I'm tired of sitting on my hands. Uh, one of the reasons I ran for mayor is. Is that we wanna move forward and not, and not, uh, sit behind and, and. We're not making anything more now than just pick somebody that we can work with that will hopefully, um, help us, uh. Make us a new home. Uh, it's time for a new home. It's, we, we're ta- we're paying rent now and. It's time that, uh, that we use the money that was given to us by the insurance and, and whatever else we can come up with. Uh, to make it happen. So that's my feeling. So that, that, that's my two bits. And. I'll give anybody any more time if they'd like to, to finish a last statement or tell me whatever and, and we'll move forward. Anybody else have a? Have something they'd like to say? Looking for hands. Well.
What did he?
I mean, with that, uh, I moved to select Albert Hopper to provide architectural services and construction supervision. For the city hall building.
I second that.
Okay. And we have a Frank and Mel second. Make note of that, Ashley. And, uh, and, uh, if there's no other discussion, I'll, uh, I'll move to, uh, a real call. Go ahead.
Uh, Councilmember Giacchino?
Nay.
Councilmember Davis?
Yay.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Swede?
Yeah.
Mayor ProTemplaine?
Nay.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes four two. All right. Thank you, everybody. Um, we've got a, uh. Kind of a big, uh, session coming up on Tuesday and, uh, I hope we can all be there and. And, uh, move forward from that. And I appreciate everybody tuning in tonight and, and. Everybody stay, uh, healthy, please. It's a.
Thank you.
It's a, it's a tough one out there.
Please, a lot of people sick out there.
Yeah, we, we need to keep the city running. So I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move. I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
A motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Hoes nay. Um, ayes have it. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Have a great night, everybody.
Thank you. Good night.
Thanks, Joe. We made it just in time.
Just in time. Yep.
Yeah, good night, Joe. We'll tune into court site now.
Bye-bye.